But to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, residents comments? Want to talk? Yeah, that's right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, I'm not going to take up your time like I did last time. Um, I appreciate your grace last time. Um, I've given you a book and with some stuff inside and it's just goes into detail about virology and virus isolation. That is not being done. So I just want you to look at it and I want you to think twice about accepting any monies regarding any pandemic in the future. Uh, because as it goes on, if you look there, you know, government has been able to provide proof of isolation, not only for the coronavirus, but measles, polio, smallpox, all of them. So all of that stuff that we've done with theater and, you know, part of control, all of it was a control issue. And if you have any medical personnel in your family, uh, this will be a very difficult uh, thing to wrap their head around, mostly because their income depends on it. And, you know, we, we know that, um, according to the Bible, you shouldn't be taken abide, uh, because it blocks discernment and, um, I just wanted to grab something real quick. I'd be able to get my hands on a consul's edition of the Expos- Expositors New Testament and, and Revelation. Um, eighteen twenty-three. And the light of a candle shall shine no more at all anew. Satan's false light will shine no more, and the voice of the bridegroom and of the bride shall be heard no more at all anew refers to a false foundation, exactly as a false light, in fact, everything about the system of the world is false, built on a lie. For your merchants were the great men of the earth, for by your sorceries were all nations deceived. Witchcraft and the drug business, referred to by sorceries, constitute the foundation of this commercial enterprise, which will be totally destroyed. So. That pretty much concludes why I'm here. I care about our children, I care about our fellow man being deceived, and I don't want it to happen any birthday. Thank you.
And we got consensus agenda items, call for motion except the consensus agenda is submitted.
Anything to discuss or separate? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Post-restaining, motion carries. Call for motion except the personnel report is submitted. Again, anything to separate or discuss? Not then, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Post-restaining, motion carries. Capitol Project Committee?
Um, they're drilling.
Uh, there's, there's, we really don't have any change, we don't have a state's approval yet, so kind of still waiting on that. Hopefully, it's going to push us out another couple of weeks probably, so we'll probably look at the end of May, let's say, man.
Yeah, as it stands right now, uh, we did get some good, good news today as far as the preliminary review was concerned, so hopefully, um, that's wrapped up tomorrow. We still have this, we'll have to finish the architectural, we're getting, we're closer, we're that little bit closer.
Senate Committee?
Next for me, I think I'm seventeen, we're supposed to be here at five.
Okay. Ex-offensive student members report?
Um, we're on spring break, um, at the school, I just want to say happy Easter, um, have fun with the eclipse, and, um, the really only thing that's going on that I know of already is, um, prom tickets are going on sale starting week we come back.
All right, Superintendent's report?
Thank you, uh, one more thing, um, related to students, April twenty-seventh, we have the ECO Campus Project starts at eight AM that morning from eight to about eleven AM, and the Wellness Walk and Wellness Fair are also that day, and they start immediately following the, um, ECO Campus Project, it's about eleven o'clock, so we're more excited about that day coming up, but it's getting pretty close. Uh, I also wanted to publicly thank, um, the New York Power Authority, for those that don't know, the New York Power Authority, um, really stepped up at a time when the Tusco Nation School needed some work done, they invested approximately a million dollars into that building, they changed overall the unitments, uh, in, in the Tusco Nation School, they also, um, put in a new water, uh, water filtration system, which was really important, and it was, it was outdated, and they paid for that as well, so, um, kind of about a million, almost a million dollars worth of work, and we're really grateful for that, um, as, as many of you know, we had a lot of work to do in that building, this was something that they were able to take off the plate, and quite frankly, they did it in a pretty expedient way, so we, we, we thank them. The, uh, last item tonight, you'll see on our new business, um, has to do with both the levy and the expenditure budget, so they're both on there, when we get into our budget presentation, we'll talk a little bit about those items, and then, um, hope on the board can have this evening.
All right. Any questions, Superintendent, on his report? All right, we'll have the, um, budget presentation then.
Sounds like it's on, okay, so we won't walk through everything on this presentation, we're going to jump forward to those items, maybe. Turn, turn it on.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're, we're going to jump forward, the board at the last meeting asked for a, a few more, uh, documents, some information that we could share with you, so, um, we'll go through those. If you recall, this, this right here, this was the levy limit, which was three point zero eight percent, okay? The, uh, the revenue loss by not going to the tax cap, this is one of the questions that was asked at, at the last meeting, Allison, do you want to?
So I went back to fifteen, sixteen year and forward, so beginning in, uh, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, the calculated levy increase you'll see in that column was four point two eight percent, and the approved levy increase was two point four nine cent percent. That equated to a lost revenue amount of five hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred twenty-three dollars, and then the right hand is the compounded amount every year after that, so as you go down in the years, you'll see on those years that the levy, uh, increase did not equal what the tax cap limit was, it increases the revenue loss, and then compounds every year after that. So at the end of this fiscal year, the compounded annual revenue loss since two thousand fifteen, sixteen is just over six million dollars, six million, eleven thousand, four hundred sixty-one dollars.
Let me leave, leave that up there, a- any questions on this?
Yeah, and twenty-one, twenty-two, if what is, uh, capital levy increase is one point nine nine, and approved one point nine nine, how, million dollar revenue loss? No, that's would be the compounded one.
It carries for, yeah, it carries forward year after year, I, I actually input it in the calculation every single year, so that even though there wasn't a revenue loss that year, there was a revenue loss, I don't know how to explain it, it's a, it's an annual revenue loss because you didn't go to the levy limit the years before, um.
I, I think, I think what Steve's saying though is that, and, and the, the, you, you went from one nine sixty-six thousand to one nine eighty-six thousand, even though it was one nine nine and one nine, e- even though you didn't go up, right, is that where you're at? That's where you're getting that, right? And, and I, I believe the answer to that is because you, when you went back and had to put it back into the formula, right, from the prior year, there was an adjustment? If that's what you said.
Yeah, yeah, I'd have to go back and look at my formulas, but I stuck it in, so every year there was, that's what it ended up being.
So, so remember, after the, as all of you know, we have adjustments to our, to, to the tax laws, right? And so my guess is that that probably has something to do with adjustment to the tax law. The next one, anything else on this? We can come back, okay? We, we were asked to put together a, a, a larger number of, you know, possibilities here with the levy increase, so you can see it starts at the levy limit, which is three point zero eight, we didn't put anything above that, um, and the board had already, um, acted on not going above the levy limit, and then we went all the way down to two point two five percent. If you look in the right-hand column, you can see what the eight-year average is with the corresponding levy increase, so if you start at the top, if you went three point zero eight, the eight-year average would be one point nine five, if we go two point seven zero, the, uh, the eight-year average would be one nine zero, if you go two two five, the eight-year average would be one eight five. Follow that good?
So then what I did was I calculated what the tax rates would be based on that levy percentage, so if you look at the top left-hand quarter there, twenty-three, twenty-four is the current year, so those are the current year tax rates, and then moving to the right, uh, you'll see the percent, uh, increase of the levy going across and what the difference would be between that calculated rate and the current rate. Now, keep in mind, those rates that I'm calculating are complete estimates, because I don't have final assessments, I don't have equalization rates from the towns, and that would completely change, these are based on what I know now, what we, uh, calculated our rates on for the current year.
So, what does say the county Niagara, um, three point eight percent? Ninety-five percent?
Correct, so the, the rate difference year to year would be a ninety-five cent increase per thousand.
Per thousand.
Correct.
Per county Niagara.
Correct. And that's based on, again, that's based on the information I have today, it could, those are only estimates, I want to be very clear about that, because they could really change based on whatever assessments, when I get the full assessments from the county and the equalization rates, they could change, so I base that purely on what information I have today, which we calculated, which I calculated the current year rates on.
Two hundred thousand dollar home, like ninety-five dollars more.
The neck, the next slide shows a two hundred thousand dollar home, you want to see that? Okay, we can always come back.
Right, so, uh, this is based on a two hundred thousand dollar home with either a basic star exemption or an enhanced star exemption, so if you look in the upper left-hand corner, if we, if you went to the tax cap limit, an increase on a two hundred thousand dollar home with a basic exemption for the town of Niagara would be a hundred and seventy-eight dollars and three cents per year, or fourteen dollars and eighty-four cents monthly. If it was an enhanced exemption, which most seniors get, it would be an increase of a hundred and fifty-seven thou- uh, dollars and fifty-two cents per year, or thirteen dollars and thirteen cents monthly. And, uh, again, that's, uh, with the exemption on the homestead property, the non-homeside properties normally do not get exemptions, so I did not include those star exemptions in there because they're normally not assessed to a non-homeside property. And then, um, if you go across, you can see at the top right foot where the tax levy equals a dollar amount or three point oh eight percent, and going across, um, it gives you the different options.
What about a calculation, and, uh, they don't get the, the star home, and whether it's the basic or the enhanced, between that numbers, that up there?
It's not, no, most homeowners do get a star exemption.
Yeah. Good, good with this for a minute? We can jump back, okay? Now, I handed each of board members this, okay? I just want to walk through this because Amazon's come up a few times, right? So, uh, on the front page, let's, we'll do the front page last, if you go to the second page, the second page is what the original, okay, the second page is what the original, um, Amazon pilot looked like, and it was a fifteen-year pilot, and what you could see in year one, if you, if you look across what the school pilot amount was going to be, and you'll see that number if you look across, six hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred ninety-one dollars, everybody see that? So that was what we originally received, what we thought was going to be year one, that this, that, that was the first one. You go to the next page, this is the actual pilot, so the actual pilot is eighteen years long, okay? And you can see that in years one and two, in, oh, let me back up, I'm sorry, go back up, one, one second, if you look at year one with what it originally was, it was going to be a ten percent payment, you can see the second column over, right, it was going to be a ten percent payment, so now if you flip to the third page, what you see is in year one, twenty-four, twenty-five, it's one hundred percent, but it's a hundred percent of pretty much nothing, right? Because there's no real business taking place there. Okay, we're talking about, uh, thirteen thousand dollars, eleven, I mean, that's, that's the total that's going to come in from that pilot, because there's no real work, it's just the property value. So for the first two years, you can see what that amount is, okay, it's a hundred percent each year, because we're not expecting, the, the, the value isn't there yet, but when you look at year three, uh, which is twenty-six, twenty-seven, it's down, it goes down to ten percent. Now, we asked them to give us the breakdown, and they didn't, they don't have it, um, but of the school, but if you just look back at the other sheet, the ten percent in twenty-six, twenty-seven, right, it, again, if these numbers are, are accurate still, you're talking about the six hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred ninety-one dollar number. So what I wanted you to see was this, if you go to page one, if we were at the ten percent of that full value amount, what that would do to our levy is it would change it from, if it was this year, instead of it being three point zero eight percent, it would be down to one point two six percent. And the, because the extra money in the pilot, because you're getting more in the pilot, that affects the levy limit, it drops down, so I, I shared it with you so that you know that when we're talking about this year's levy, you can have an idea of what you can kind of expect to happen in future years when the Amazon pilot really kicks in, okay?
Six hundred ninety thousand roughly, on the second page.
Yep.
Because I know the land gets assessed at a hundred percent, the building is, uh, ten percent, is it included a hundred percent of the land?
I honestly, I don't know how they did this, this came from their office, you know, we, we use it, but, but I will tell you this, the property value from what we were getting in the taxes for the, I think it was three parcels of land, compared to what we're expected in the pilot the first year, is like a thousand dollars or more than that. We were getting about eleven, eleven thousand something dollars, twelve thousand dollars, now it's, I think, twelve, thirteen thousand, so it's obviously very small until the business is up and running.
I would assume that, that six hundred ninety thousand includes the, uh, uh, improvements on the land, you know, like they were expecting to do it.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, absolutely, yep.
Reassessing the land portion is a soul for our wealth, that changes these numbers in a big way.
Right.
Those numbers aren't.
Good to know, that's good. So, and I put right on the front, just so that if you're ever referencing it, says original, the original year one pilot, and then the current three-year pilot, just so that you can see, you know, year three on the last page is, is really when the pilot kicks in, okay, of any significance, all right? I think that was it, right?
Yeah.
Any questions that we can answer? No? Any slide that you want left up, I'll bring this with me, but. Yep. Yep, three point zero eight's in the top left, if, if you move over to two nine nine, two nine zero, two eight, two seven, yep, you can see it.
Which one are you looking at? Yes, so, uh, three point oh eight, with a basic star, that first line would be fourteen eighty-four a month.
Yeah, I'm looking at the one seventy-eight oh three.
Yep, one seventy-eight oh three annually.
Three oh four. The difference is fifteen dollars.
Correct, he's looking at the two point eight versus the three point oh.
Got it.
I'm just trying to say, you know, we both went through those breakdowns of the percentages?
Yep.
When each, kind of what it looks like you drop down, went from there to two point eight, it's only fifteen bucks.
So, say fifteen dollars to go to two point eight roughly. So go back to the other chart, when it was the school or district going to two point eight.
Right. You want to see, you want to see this?
Okay.
Well, I'd have to plug it into the formula, yeah.
They can see the data.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the others.
Hundred thousand dollars.
I'll keep this with me if you want to flip around as you're talking.
Um, the other part under the reports to the board before we move on to bringing this back up and old business is a tax refund?
Cambria had a tax ref- uh, we had to provide a tax refund to a homeowner, because the town of Cambria had an error in their calculation of an agricultural exemption, so we're going to be refunding three thousand, one hundred twelve dollars and sixty-seven cents to a homeowner because of that, which will come off our levy, and we don't get that back, just so you know, it's gone, and so whenever those towns make errors like that, it's on us, we pay for it, we lose it in our levy, we have no recourse to get that money back. Yep.
Well, I, and I have, I'm, I think I, you know, or spoke to our attorneys to see if we have recourse to send them an invoice, but not really, so we have to.
All right.
Do they know we made a mistake?
Yeah, because they're the ones that sent me this, so, yeah, they know.
You got to make sure they're willing to keep a funders.
All right, moving on to, uh, items for board discussion then, um, is there anything being up that's not, uh, budget-related, before we get into that part? Uh, Julie did bring up a, a point with the board walkthroughs, uh, Dan and I will sit down and chit chat about that, uh, they come up with a timetable or a date for that. Um, all right, uh, old business, so we'll bring back up then a discussion about what would be setting the tax levy at, um, question is, we didn't hear anything from New York State yet with, uh, with their numbers or anything, what was the, I know that the governor had moved the, the deadline to the fourth, was the last thing I heard.
Yeah, no, nothing, nothing yet, um, April one was supposed to be the deadline, I looked on before I came tonight to see if there was any chatter either with Nisba or Niskus, and I didn't see them.
All right then, um. So our point of discussion then is now is what you set the tax levy at, you saw that, you see the numbers and the value there, you saw the other two sheets, and we had our discussion from last meeting, uh, we'll pick that back up on what your feelings are, so I open up for discussion.
Now, do we have to make a decision this meeting, or can we wait to see?
We would have to call a special meeting next week, I think, is it what the next week's deadline? Well, I know there's, there's the board, some, school boards are meeting next week, Wednesday, so I mean, the, the actual deadline, I mean, that's our printing deadline and that part of it, but.
Just to get the flyers out.
But the seventeenth, which our next meeting is too late.
You know, and there's no reason why we can't make a decision, right? But it's, it's just awful when they delay the budget, you don't know the exact numbers, and we have to do that, but I don't think that's an issue for us.
Well, I mean, and the point of this is, is that what you're changing is your, what, you know, could be possibly where your, your levy is being set as opposed to the fact that it's not going to affect any, any cuts or anything that we've made to programming or anything like that, because we were going to make that, it's stuff that we make no matter which is, it's ridiculous, so. I'm just looking to see if Nisba did say anything last minute. All right, floor's open.
I know, based, and I'm not speaking for anyone here, but based on our last conversation, I thought we, we weren't going to hit the three point eight, and maybe the, the high mark would be two point nine, that's, that's the feeling I got.
You're correct, that's what we discussed last time, that was, yeah. Yeah, um, and that's the, that's the key, so I, I asked basically what your range was, um, or tried to ask what your range was, and some people gave you one number, uh, but to, for Allison to provide the data she did provide for us up there, I'm looking at you.
Hand me.
Um, but now you see that the range is based on, on, uh, what we gave Allison, um, all the way down, you saw what the impact is over time, uh, com- compounded with any change that we do in the, the levy amount, um, and so we, we're not only just thinking what's going to happen with this school year's budget, but also in our future budget, uh, years, uh, of what'll happen, and if, uh, the possibility, this, I mentioned, Dan, as Dan and I are talking this week, um, he, he mentioned about the Amazon pilot, do with, uh, you know, coming back on, uh, you know, when, when that starts really hitting that, we could see in those years, the zero to negative possibly impact, um, happening and without us being able to raise revenue also, so you have to think, keep that peace in mind that with that amount of revenue coming in from the Amazon pilot agreement, that at one point we could hit that roll where we're going to be like, all right, we're zero and negative again in, in what we can raise.
Everything on this board compounds, right? Every year.
Yeah.
So it's, it could be a big number at that point.
Yeah. Right, it can be, yeah.
I mean, would I raise, be interested in that, especially if you think it's best, have a more, more picture of what?
I, I. I, I, you know, again, that's for all of us to, to discuss and decide right now. Um, I mean, I'm fine with setting it something tonight. Mike? Julie?
Yeah, same.
I don't think nothing's gonna change.
Yeah, I don't think anything would change so serious.
Yeah, well, just incrementally, we're getting, say, two or three hundred thousand dollars more than we thought we were. You know, I certainly wanna keep, uh, you know, the levy increased.
I guess my point is, if we go to two point nine nine, we already lose them thirty-two thousand, so.
No, what Jason's saying is that if, I'll give you an example, if you look at what the pilot agreement worksheet that Dan gave us, let's say the state gave us six hundred and sixty thousand, like that would impact the pilot agreement that way. You're now talking at a levy limit with, you know, one point two six, you know, that we're talking about as opposed to that. I, I understand where Jason's coming from with that. Um, you know, my, the, the, the part of that is though, you remember we're balancing this budget with hitting reserves, you know, and we talk about sustainability and where, where are we going to? Yeah, I, I understand that you're trying to balance the, the, the amount coming from the taxpayers versus the amount that we're, um you know, being able to put into reserves there, but we have to think into the, in the worst case scenario that we're gonna tap into those reserves this coming year because things could get worse. Um, and so I, I, I think this is a time where we just say, listen, right now, this is the data we have from the state and there's no telling if the state's gonna come back with their budget next week anyways, we might be sitting here doing the same thing and not being able to push it ahead because it was last year, it was twentieth of April, right? They put it, was finally done. Yeah.
Can I just add one thing?
Sure, go ahead.
Just one thing I would say to you, you know, the, the most that the, the one-house budgets have asked for is the three percent. And if they did three percent, that's about a s- the three, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, somewhere around there, right? Um, and right now there, it's about twenty-five thousand dollars, so let's just say it's seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars more. And if you just looked at the, just to keep in mind, cuz we didn't pull this up again, but I think the reserve might go the wrong way, I think. So if you look at the reserve. Okay.
Alright.
Yeah, yeah. So if you look at all, all the reserves that are being used, the idea would be that if the state, what our budget increases, what we would be recommending is that if you got another seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, you, you wouldn't put that against the reserves that you're pulling from, so you wouldn't apply as many of the reserves, right? So that, that would be the plan.
And I just wanna add to that, that appropriate balance amount that's been budgeted there, pretty much wipes out.
Again, remember, to be fair, we don't use all of our budget, right? But one of the things that we're getting into right now is um the, the point where if we don't have any excess, not, not the reserve amount, but excess above that, then you can't put into capital reserves, you can't put into transportation reserves, forget about the fact that each bus is gonna cost us three times more potentially. But even just, just looking at even what it costs us now for a bus, if you don't have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to roll over, that's one bus, right? So.
Right.
Yeah, well, and then we also need the cash flow so that we're not um falling into that boat where we're taking out um brands. Um, considering we know how, how expedited the state is in sending us our Tuskora funds.
Can you go back to the other?
Sure, I can.
I know we have like the common ones, well.
Is this the one you want?
Yeah. I mean, it, you know, comfortable place. So you see that, like, yeah, the school is down on this, but also that's money in taxpayers' pockets. But really comfortable place, you know, the exponential factor. So I, I know a lot of times we'll look at the brackets, oh, we're missing out on the bracket numbers, when in reality, even at two point two, but I'm giving over three quarters of a million dollars up to, you know, one point one million dollars at the highest. You know, it's, it's a substantial amount that in addition that we are continue to take from the taxpayer, so. You know, just something very conscious of, I, you know, fifteen, twenty dollars a year, year over year, against the, to, to rack up for some people, so. You know, each year we have a conversation, ah, we don't have that much more, but year over year, a lot of people did. And make a bit of a difference.
You know, and I, and I, I don't disagree with you. I'm always worried about the taxpayers as well as the employees, all the stakeholders. Dan and Allison, that's a sign about, which I didn't realize a negative effect Amazon could have on the tax cap, which could start lowering at three point eight percent number. And me and Steve have been around with eleven, twelve, or whatever happened, happened prior. I didn't wanna see no cuts in programs down the road. I don't wanna see no cut in employees down the road. Um, I would like to not be at the three point eight, maybe lower that number, but um, we've been in a good spot. I don't wanna mess it up. Because I lived, we lived through that, and even the people who weren't on the board, their kids were here, Julie's and Bob's. And we had to cut programs, we probably made off five, six hundred teachers and SRP staff, and those were pretty tight. And I'm always concerned about the residents, but the unknown factor right now, I think we gotta be careful, especially when you're talking maybe fifteen dollars to go from uh two point nine nine to two point seven is not a lot of money. It is to some residents, don't think it isn't because it is, but I think I talked enough, I think you got a trip.
Well, the other piece with that, uh you know, from back at those years is what happened, we had the discussion with a number of people that came in uh with home prices, uh home values. Uh as a school system starts to decline because of financial, um you know, issues, the, the value of homes were going down at the same time and trying to find, sell your home if you wanted to move into a district that had clubs and sports and everything else like that, it's becoming very difficult to do at that time. So I mean, we, it's a, you know, it's a delicate balance, everything, balancing, you know, what, what can the taxpayers afford? What's in a school district put up as a, as a good program and not tipping the scales too far either direction um with all the, all the other things that that can create a domino effect for.
Is when you really look at a school district, and I know I've probably said this before, I can only compare it to the town because I'm involved in it like Bob and Mike, two percent tax increase over here. We got maybe forty employees, we have six hundred employees, we, we educate four thousand students, we have seven buildings. And over eight years, we're at one point maybe nine-four. That's not a bad thing for what we try to do here.
But not discredit what you're saying, Jay, I understand, we all understand where you're coming from with that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say, I would like to see, like two, put a half of it.
I think my concern is, okay, we're fully funded, right? This year, what did we get? What was it, twenty-three thousand? I don't know. Right?
Oh, oh, what?
Going forward, that's not gonna change, but I can see.
Well.
I mean, we had the opportunity to get, get fully funded, that was nice, but going forward, we're not gonna see that. So that's a big.
My, my concern is, is this discussion about correcting the formula that they keep bringing up and having to relook at the formula. I don't know if you read, when you get your, um, your, uh, you know, the, the newspaper articles from, from NISBA and the email, there's a lot of discussion in the Albany region about what, uh from both the, the senate or the, you know, senate and the house chairs for education and the governor's office about correcting the, the, updating the, the foundationate formula. And you, no one knows what that's gonna mean for us. That could all of a sudden be a huge hit for some of the districts like us. You know, I know for Downstate, uh in looking at some of the board presence down there, they're extremely worried because that's, all, all their money comes from is basically a foundation. Um, so, yeah, they, I mean, I'm worried about that, of what's gonna be the future, like what, are we gonna hit that year all of a sudden where foundationate changes? And now there is no hold harmless and we're in a negative amount that we're making the state and we're trying to scramble for that, that money.
Right.
So, yeah.
You think that's hold harmless?
Well, the governor didn't want to think it, you did it this year, so.
Again, I think at best what you would give because nobody's asking for more, you know, hold harmless at three percent, which for us is about that seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, you know. That, that would be, I think, the most.
Alright, so Jay, you're gonna be around two point five. Mike, start down there and go around. Julie?
Two nine nine.
Um, I'll be with two nine nine. So, alright, well, uh, I'll call, I'll make the motion then to um set our tax levy for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year to be two nine nine? Is there a second? Alright, any further discussion of that then? If not, then all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose? Abstaining? Carries? Alright. Alright, um, any other old business? Or a new business? Um, we have to accept the resignation that's listed on there. So I will make the motion to accept the resignation of Mr. John Fricucci from the Board of Education effective March first, two thousand twenty-four. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries. He already did the levy amount. Sorry about that, jumped ahead of that. And then approve a budget expenditure.
It's actually in the revenue.
So that's what we need to make the motion for? You sure? Alright, um, I will call for a motion, actually, I'll make the motion to set our uh budget expenditure for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year at eighty-seven million, seventy-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Once Allison has double-checked that. Is there a second? Alright, we'll wait for Allison's calculations and then go on. Carry the one. Well, we don't need a roll call on that, do we? No. I have Dan double-check your numbers, but we saw how that. Okay then. All, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, standing? Carries? Alright, any public comments in the meeting? Open mic night. Board member comments? Um, just one thing, I, if you guys have been up here at the campus at all, you know, spring sports are in full swing and there's kids all over the place and a lot of stuff going on really well. Um, tennis courts look like they're, they.
Coming, not fast enough for the tennis coach, but they're coming.
So it looks like a big mud pit with the rain right now. Uh, but now, you know, make sure we get out to support our sports. Um, next Wednesday is the first home track meet of the year. Against Lockport, it's the, it's the big rivalry meet, that's the one that we always have to end up beating for the year. So we start the year with it. So come on out and, and see the, see the fest, the, the, the meet. It's uh, it's exciting. Are you, are you throwing?
Yeah.
So, excellent. Any other board member comments? Alright, if not, then I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Well, second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining, we're adjourned.